Hi. Dawn did say that he's gonna be about 25 minutes late, so. Trying to get the livestream going. Okay, I think we are good to go. Just say hi.
Hello.
Okay, so we don't need to roll call or anything, so it's just a work session and you don't need a quorum for it. So, in November, there was a request to come back and have further discussion on the Housing Production Strategy Workshop that we did in October. And so, I have not prepared any new materials. I think that we could just go off of the existing PowerPoint that was presented during the October meeting and then just have further discussion and questions and feel out whatever new information we have. So unless there's any objections to that, we could get started. Okay, so as a reminder, these are the six strategies that are ultimately being proposed as regulatory strategies that would have impacts on the Development Code, which is under the Planning Commission's purview. It is separated out into kind of the two categories. One, market rate strategies to promote market rate housing. And two, to promote more affordable housing and then a sort of catch-all. So for market rate housing, that is a mix of housing. That is for anybody that's 120% area median income or above. But a lot of the market rate housing that's currently being developed is the larger lot, single-family home subdivision, or nothing at all. And so, there's a couple of proposals that are being identified as sort of meeting the middle section, where it's not necessarily your first single-family home is the larger lot with the big backyard and front yard, but some in-between. And there's two different options associated with that. And then you have the proposals to sort of try to get geared more towards the affordable housing for anybody that's 80% area median income or below. That would go all the way down to individuals needing subsidized housing types as well. And then the catch-all is to simplify our standards associated with smaller lot initial type development that they don't have to jump through a number of hoops to go through. So, does anybody have any questions on those concepts? Or do you want to get into the nitty-gritty? Maybe it is. So. So the first one is to promote the cottage cluster strategy. So this is where you don't necessarily have parking right next to your home. You don't necessarily have your own front yard or rear yard. It's a communal space, but you have your own dwelling. That usually looks like a smaller cottage that's single-family detached type. And we currently allow this in our city. But based off of the way that they're showing it here, the way that our code would be established right now, for an example of a 20,000-square-foot lot, you could yield four dwelling units, which yields to be able to get the rent or the sales price to make the land affordable and the construction costs affordable, would be larger-sized units, a lower density, and a larger sales cost. Whereas in exchange, the proposal would be to reduce the lot requirements and increase the opportunity for density, which would be able to fill in that gap of those smaller homes that are more starter homes that are, get you into the market to start building equity to get to the next step of a single-family home. And so, the proposal here is, we already have cottage clusters. This would just make the cottage cluster concept more marketable and affordable for developers to then use, to be able to get the densities needed to make a more affordable units for the housing type, so.
The cottage clusters, we allow four on their own lots, though, right?
It could be on a single lot, or you can do what's called a condominium map, where you maintain the land as one, but you can sell the structures and the ownership of the structures individually. So you still are creating a for-sale product, but you're creating a product in which it's by its nature more affordable than not.
So we're looking at doing affordable, obviously with a land, community land trust. So, that would work. The six units. Had our standard setbacks, right? Had we, and we're still talking about reforming the zoning code, is that correct?
So what phase we're at right now is the concept phase of, do we want to tweak the code to allow for, for the example of the cottage clusters, something that is more geared towards that missing middle housing rather than another market rate type development? And if the answer on its face is, this seems like it's a good opportunity to try to get people into the market, and we're interested in seeing that pursued, we would then go to the next step of, okay, what does our development code look like? And how do we take any concerns that might be had associated with the development and implement development standards that can address some of those concerns? But we haven't gotten there yet, and so what that would look like specifically for each of these, I can give some examples, but I don't have a detailed analysis of that at this point.
So our current code would allow for six units?
Our current code allows for the four.
Okay.
I think it's kind of a no-brainer. I mean, 2,000 square foot is a decent-sized house, but yeah, it's a.
I've never owned a 2,000-square-foot house.
Yeah, I mean, 1,100 square foot, if you can fit two extra houses in the same property, why wouldn't you allow that? When a lot of times the 2,000-square-foot houses are single-family with a yard, backyard, you're not necessarily thinking cottage cluster at that size. Just my thoughts.
I'm not. So from what I've heard, it sounds like this is kind of like an unused thing. And it sounds like we're incentivizing a thing that's already not being used. And I don't know how much better incentivizing is really gonna make it pan out in practical use. I mean, if people aren't using it now at four, how much more are they really gonna use it at six?
So it's unused in our city now, because the way that our code is written, it doesn't make it pencil out for developers to choose that option.
Okay, but if we incentivize it here, but there's other things, what's gonna keep them to choose other things instead of this?
Nothing.
From a, just from a real estate perspective, when buyers are looking at purchasing a home in a $447,000 price range, they're not wanting to share space. When you look at taking that down quite a bit to an affordable price, for somebody, they might be more willing to share space at a more affordable price just to get into the market. So you have the buyer pool opening up where developers are advertising to. So if they're able to afford, to be able to build and develop an area and know that they can sell those houses to a more affordable range, then I see the incentive there, just from a real estate perspective.
I'm not necessarily against this thing. I just, I mean, it seems like one of those things that, well, we got this idea, maybe it'll make it better, but we don't know if it's really gonna make it actually attractive, or are there, it's gonna be the solution that doesn't ever really get implemented?
So we have, we have stuff in our code now that is on the books as a toolbox of development-type options that have never been used. And so it's one of those things of, in this process, we look at it as, okay, do we need to refine that toolbox and evaluate why it's never been used? And so in evaluating our code and looking at the cost of construction and the associated price that they need to get per the unit, a cottage cluster development type where you're paying $450,000 for it is not, as Kirsten was talking about, it's not attractive to the buyer, so it's not a tool that's being utilized. And so really what we're talking about here is tweaking the tool to actually establish standards that would meet the market demand for it, so that you're creating a tool that might actually then be utilized. The cottage cluster concept, obviously since it's in our code, it's not a new concept. Our code is just drafted in a manner in which the concept is not feasible for development. And so we would be pulling examples where, in other similar-sized cities, where cottage clusters have been positively received and implemented, pulling from them, what does their code look like? What's the densities? And how can we market our, how can we design our code to be more consistent with that? Because that demonstrates that there is a market tool available to build to that type of standard. So basically, what this conversation is demonstrating is our code's out of whack in terms of the ability to get it built, not necessarily that there's no demand for that level of housing.
Do we have instances for comparison where this kind of change has made it attractive? Or these have been successful and used?
I think my example of pulling it from other cities where this type of development is more common is where that example would come from. Do I have one off the top of my head right now that I could say, "Go look at this city, it clearly does it"? No. But the concept is not a new one, the type of development is not a new one, and we would be pulling from other cities where this has been a successful model to model our code off of it to be more in line with what the market is creating.
If you want to see something similar, South Town Carvalis has something very similar to this. There are several homes on a lot, but they do have garages. And I don't know that these are proposed with garages, but there's something very similar in South Carvalis, if you wanted to see an example of something.
Salem, near the fargrounds area, too, huh?
You'd be taking our current.
Microphone?
You'd be taking our current development plan and going from four to a maximum of six, correct?
That's the theory. The concept is to try to say that our current code is broken because it's not being utilized. And so if we make it more consistent with how it's been successful, which is around the six-plus units, then you're gonna be more successful. It'll be an option that is available. So can I guarantee that it's gonna be exactly six? No, because we haven't drafted the code. But it's, the concept before us is, if we do design the code that's going to be more towards what the market is building, then you're gonna have the successful tool available, which will yield the smaller-type units, which will then create the market for those more affordable units.
But as part of the change, on that 20,000-square-foot lot, we have the option to say, no more than six, correct?
We do. We do have that option, yes. If we put those restrictions in, we want to make sure that those restrictions are, again, consistent with what the market design is. Otherwise, it will be one of those that just sits on the shelf again, right? Because we're artificially capping it, we're artificially saying, "No more than", and I don't know what the.
I don't know, there's an artificial cap, though. I mean, I'm just trying to preserve, you know, a minimum lot size for each lot. And I think if you take that 20,000-square-foot lot, it's fine. I can see how it wouldn't pencil out with four, but I would certainly think it would pencil out with six. But I just hate to see you take that 20,000-square-foot lot and then all of a sudden start throwing eight in there.
Just to be clear in what we're talking about here, these cottage units that we're talking about, they are not divisible into plexes. Is that true?
They would not be able to be. Correct. The simple answer is correct. They cannot go from a cottage design and then be further devised down into lesser units to be like duplexes for each of this. So you can't go from six to 12.
Right.
There are, we, a cottage home is not identified as a single-family home. It's a different type of development. And House Bill 2001 simply says, you need to allow duplex in the same manner as you would a single-family home. And so, this would fall outside of that purview.
Okay.
And lots, so, again, I think I want to just identify that we're just identifying tools.
Correct.
The cottage cluster does not equate to, that is what everything will now be built as. The, you know, we have tools in our, in our code right now where we allow for townhomes on lots that are 2,000 square feet minimum. And that's a tiny little lot. And this would be a similar type of development, but just in a different manner to provide for those types of people who don't want to have a neighboring wall with somebody, but still want to have a place that's their own, a place that they can buy. They want to have that option, but they can't afford a single-family home. These types of code changes are providing that option for those to get into the home market. And so, it, the slide says six plus, and so I don't want to say it's gonna be six. It's gonna be, is the concept of considering this further something that we want to pursue? Or is it just completely off the table? The next step is, what does our code look like? And we would go through this process of having conversations of, what are the concerns? What are the hard lines? And how do we build a code around that? And so really, right now, it's, you know, what are the concerns about it? And is this an absolute, just, we hate it so much, we don't want to look at it ever again?
Is it reasonable to say that if the unit number goes up, the unit size goes down? I mean, clearly, it would have to be, so it wouldn't be like eight, 1,100 square-foot houses.
Doesn't our code allow for, what is it, 450 square foot? That's a tiny home, though, isn't it?
For accessory dwelling unit standards, is what that's talking about.
But if these are considered cottage cluster, cottage cluster that's not a single-family home, okay.
Would that be something we would be considering, is the.
That is a tool, right? And so that's actually a tool that will apply to several of these other concepts as well. It's called the floor-area ratio tool.
I think that these would be perfect. Because if you go down off of Oak, or some of those, they have those row apartments, right? They would be exactly like what we're looking at if you put space in between them. And they wouldn't be shareables, because they all walk down the same sidewalk to go into their door. I mean, just as you come in town across from Pillbox, same thing. They're just hooked by one roof. So if we separated them to be each individual, then it would be a cottage cluster. No, I think it would be phenomenal, because it is a great starter home for that single bachelor or female, small family with one child.
Even at 1,100 square foot, you can easily get three bedrooms. I mean.
Oh, I can. I, we build, we build three-bedroomed, two-bathroom homes all the time.
That's a standard-sized house 20 years ago. I mean.
My first house was only 1,100 square feet, and we had three bedrooms, three bathrooms, so it's doable.
So I think that that's a great idea. And these appeal to the people that are in school, just starting a job, don't have animals, do or don't have a child, one. No yard to have to really maintain. It gives them a foot in the door to buy a home. And to earn equity in it, to be able to sell it and move into something larger, which is why we do a starter home, or downsized. And these are perfect for, even if it's the first starter home, or the ending home for a senior, because that's perfect senior housing, which we do not have enough here of.
So I, I like these as a concept, for all the reasons mentioned here. But, and yes, I would like to explore, you know, what this would look like being implemented. I really would like to see apples-to-apples comparisons of other cities to Lebanon and see where these things have been utilized and other places where they've been on the books and haven't, and why. You know, what more attractive options the developers, you know, steered towards instead, and the reasons for that, you know? So that when we do get to talking nuts and bolts about what we're gonna set up for Lebanon, it's not just, you know, concepts of, well, we think, you know, this, that. We've got concrete markers.
I think my simple answer to you is, we don't have the capacity to create a brand-new wheel. And so we would be trying to pull from what the market has bared and good code examples that are already in existence and how it would be applied. But I have written down a note, we will have a work session with a joint Planning Commission and City Council meeting next month. I'll get the date by the end of this meeting to make sure that you all know and are aware. And I can make that as a note for the consultants to come back and actually give you pictures of what this would look like in similar cities as well.
Right, well, my concern, I mean, this, I don't know when this entered our building code, but let's say, you know, 10 years or whatever, go, I mean, cost of lumber, cost of gas, cost of everything else was down. Somebody thought it was a good idea then. And then, it never happened. So, we might have something we think is a great idea now, and then it not happen again.
My question is, what do we lose if we offer this as a tool? Is there a considerable cost with looking into this to seeing if it's feasible? Or is it just simply saying, we're going to take the time we're using anyway to look at, see what other cities have done and how it could be implemented here, and we're just offering this tool? We're not saying anybody has to use it, and if they don't, no harm, no foul? Or is it, I mean, are we losing something by offering it and it not being used?
No. The goal of this whole process is to show, we created the land use system, and we did good, and then the markets changed, and then the world grew, and then all of a sudden, something that was, you know, $60,000 home 30 years ago is now a $600,000 home. And the world has changed, but the people's incomes have not changed commensurate to that world. And so now we have to think differently. And now we have to try to provide new options to get people into the market to be able to start affording a $600,000 home before they're 80. And these are tools that we're trying. These are tools that people have utilized and have been successful. And it's also a little bit of the think tanks looking through it and trying to look at the data and going, okay, based off of this mass amount of data, which I am not smart enough to identify myself, we think that these new tools will be successful in their mass amount of research and talking to construction and developers and all that kind of stuff. And so there might be new ideas. And just like in our current code where there's tools that aren't being used, we could try something in this process and say, we want to provide these opportunities. And if the opportunities aren't being utilized, well, we have to do this eight years from now. And during that process, we'll go back and talk to the developers and go, hey, why weren't you using these opportunities? What was it about our code that you didn't like? What was it about this concept? And it could be something as simple as, well, nobody wants to live in that type of housing unit, and then we could scrap it. Or it could be, well, yeah, it's just not penciling out because of X, Y, and Z, and then we tweak it again. And so, am I gonna be able to guarantee you that we're gonna create a code that's gonna be perfect? I can guarantee you that's not gonna happen. What I can say is that we're going to create a code where we're going to try to provide opportunities for new types of housing, to get people into the housing market and get people into more affordable homes, while also trying to listen to the concerns of the residents and preserving neighborhood character and the feel of Lebanon. We're gonna try to find that balance. And so I can't guarantee you that we're gonna get something that is going to be utilized and utilized a lot. And if it doesn't work the first go-around, we're gonna tweak it. And every single time we write a new code, the second that it gets implemented, somebody goes, "Well, you didn't think about this", and then we gotta go and tweak it. And so it's, it's a process. But at this point, we're really just trying to figure out, do we want this process, to go through that process to try to create this opportunity?
I agree with Kristen about what do we have to lose, right? So I think we all agree that it's something to look more into further for this one. There's probably more to get through, too.
Especially if you're having, we have the West Side Sector. People are putting more and more property into city limits. You have the urban growth boundary areas that can, where you're not building in the already-established neighborhoods, that some of those, you know, developers might say, hey, yeah, this is gonna work here. I mean, a prime example is Joy Street out there. Those houses are not very far apart, but they're huge houses. Little, very little front yard, and they have not a ton in the back, but the most of the property is taken up by a massive house. So, people just can't afford to buy those anymore, at least, not right now.
Well, that's what a developer will say. I mean, I've talked to a few that are like, I'm not gonna do something like that, because I can't make my money back. I can't build enough doors to have my, to make money off of it.
So similar to the cottage cluster is the more single, smaller, single-family detached housing. And this concept is created by smaller lot sizes, which can't necessarily yield a 4,000-square-foot house. And that's the concept at its base. The tool, the zoning tool that would be used, like we talked about in the cottage cluster, is the floor-area ratio. And that zoning tool allows us to say, if you're gonna build on a smaller, single-family home lot, we want it to look like it's characteristic of a single-family detached home. And so you're gonna establish a floor-area ratio that says, it's like, for one square foot of building, you have to have four square feet of open space. And that sets the standard of, for the smaller lot, you equate to a smaller building footprint. And you still maintain the setbacks as, maybe not a full-traditional, single-family home, but you still maintain setbacks in between it to make sure that you still end up with the single-family detached sort of look. And so this is one of those tools where it's gonna look like a single-family neighborhood, but mini-style. And so it's, again, one of those, maybe starter homes, maybe your second rung up the ladder before you can move into a traditional, single-family home sort of thing. But I know one of the concerns about this last go-around was, well, how do you maintain the character of a single-family neighborhood while allowing for these smaller lots? It's that tool of that floor-area ratio where we set the standard of what it feels like to make sure that it's commensurate with the scale. And so, that's, that's the concept. This is very much so like a cottage cluster. You're gonna have smaller front yards, you're gonna have smaller rear yards. It doesn't need to be considered at this stage, but if there is concern regarding the open space character and availability of open space for the residents in these smaller-type homes, we need to create a balance between the city demand on public open space and parks versus the private property responsibility of providing their own open space. And so one concept would be to, as part of the development as a whole, yes, you can have those smaller lots, but you would also have to have some sort of a common open space within the development itself. And so those are zoning tool opportunities to try to start addressing those concerns that people might have regarding demands on open space or, you know, people having their own open space capabilities, that kind of thing.
So when you offer an open space, like picture two, is the city required to be, do the maintenance for the open space, like a park?
No, it would end up being something like a homeowners association.
So an HOA, okay.
And something like that where that's the only thing covered by the HOA or for the fees. I've seen fees as little as 20 bucks, you know, for six months, three months, six months, whatever. So it's not like it would be a huge cost either.
I'm very much in favor of this as a concept. Frankly, I think it's very needed. The hesitancy I have, though, and, you know, you've mentioned we've got this tool, the floor-area ratio thing. this tool of the, um, uh, floor area ratio thing. My, my, my concern is, is loopholes and, and, and creativity that, that allows abuse so that, um, uh, these things get turned into plexes without us meaning it. But, uh, for, for, if, for it truly to be a single family home, I am absolutely in favor of it. Um, and I, I think it's very much, much needed, but, but, but again, I, I, I worry about, uh, potential, uh, unforeseen, uh, uh, gotchas here.
So, um, with that, I get that wholeheartedly. Um, and, and that's where I do talk about, and, and I don't want to make this sound like this is a miracle pill.
Right.
But the floor area ratio sets a, a maximum in which a building envelope can be, and that's going, you know, single story to multiple story. And, you know, for a lot size that's 3,500 square feet, if you set the floor area ratio right, you're again looking at a maximum build area between 1,000 to 1,200 square feet, I'm, I'm estimating. And can you build a duplex out of that? Yeah. Is it worth it? Will it pencil out for the rents that you're going to get for that low square footage? Probably not. And so the market is not going to bear having that level of development for that little of a return of square footage for the residences. Um, and so that's where I say that, that tool helps you maintain the character, but also reduces that likelihood of it happening. And when we start trying to get into code development for it, um, we can identify that as a point of concern and how to mitigate those concerns, because there is a, a level where you look at it and go, 3,500 square feet for two dwelling units and two families is pretty small, and so that doesn't seem reasonable, and how do we address that? Come up with the floor area ratio, I'm sure we can come up with more.
All right.
Yeah.
Not to belabor that, I mean, that's maybe something to, uh, dig into the weeds, uh, offline or something, but, uh, um, the, the concept itself, very much in favor of it.
So you would change the minimum lot size for everything in, inside the city, or just?
This, this would be, again, be a tool added to the war chest. Um, I don't think that we would be very popular if we all of a sudden said across the board, every single family residential property can now be 2,500 square feet or 3,500 square feet. Um, I, I, I think that pitchforks would come into this.
Well, that's what I, that's what I'm asking.
And, and so we're allowed to have our standard, traditional, single family concepts. Um, the state hasn't come and taken that away from us yet, other than the duplex thing. Um, and so that's, that's still the baseline. That's still what the, the, the code's going to say is a single family dwelling should be on this. But like, we already have the concept of zero lot lines where you can build on a smaller lot with zero setback on one. That's a tool that, that's separate from the traditional. Townhomes are a tool that's separate from the traditional. This would be another tool, the cottage cluster would be another tool. Will all of them be used? No, because not all of them are being used now. But will some of them be used? Hopefully. And, and so it's just, how do we make that tool and address those concerns while still maintaining your base? So yes, on this too?
Yes.
Recalibrating multifamily housing development standards. So currently, we allow for three-story apartment complexes. We have a fairly robust open space standard and a fairly high parking standard. Um, and because of that, the unit's rent is, is higher than what somebody who is living in an apartment would feel comfortable paying. Um, and, and so the, the concept is by increasing the opportunity to build denser, then you are decreasing the price per unit, um, and the rent for it to then be more affordable for those renting. So you have the proposal, which is go from three stories to four stories, don't throw anything at me. Uh, decreasing the minimum open space standards, but making it focused more on quality open space rather than quantity, and then also reducing the minimum parking, then doing it on a scale based off of bedroom count rather than universal across the board.
Absolutely against, um, changing our standards here at all. There, w- w- we've already been invaded with parking, with, uh, apartments and stuff, and, uh, um, re- re- reducing this stuff i- is not going, we're, we're, we're trusting the good-heartedness of, of, of the landowners, the developers, et cetera, to pass their significant savings onto each and every single tenant that they have, which, um, you've got to have a lobotomy to believe that.
I guess my feeling on this would be to take a look at the open space and the parking issue.
Yeah.
And not go over three stories.
I agree.
Agreed.
A four-story is just not, Lebanon's not ready for four stories. I think, I do think that we have a lot of wasted open space though in parking, because Queen Anne is a prime example of that.
Okay.
And I agree with that as well.
Okay.
Is there any current consideration into the flow of income for these larger multifamily complexes and how that flow of income to the developers and the property owners, uh, either benefits or does not benefit the city? In terms of like someone, I mean, it's not probably people living in Lebanon that are building these, um, and reaping the benefits of the income from the rents. So the flow of where that income is going is probably not back into Lebanon, unless they're developing again, and then they're just creating more stream that's probably going somewhere else. So I, that would be a consideration for me as far as when we do talk about this and what that looks like, and how many units they can do, and I guess it's just a consideration for larger complexes in general, who's actually developing them and where that money's going, if that makes sense.
Portland and Salem.
Not Lebanon.
Yeah, nope.
Well, a- and the other thing is every single one of these things, um, is going to be having a drastic impact on, on the traffic, et cetera, um, on, on our streets. I've, I've, um, used to live in Portland and, um, uh, travel around quite a bit, uh, the outline areas of Portland, what have you, and, and the, the, the traffic on residential streets has just increased exponentially. It, it, it is amazing. And, um, the, the Portland metro has cre- kept all the way clear out to Newburgh, and that, that's, it, it's there right now. In, 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 what's happening is every scrap land, they're, they're, they're dumping in, um, units just like this, uh, five units high, a- as, as much as they can pack in, and there, there is no consideration for, for, for the traffic patterns. You, you've got these old, um, 1950s streets, expected to, to carry, uh, 100 times more traffic than, than they did, a- and they, they can't do it. And, and that's, that's going to happen here. I, I had to have my, uh, uh, vehicle towed, uh, it died on I-5, and the tow truck driver, driver, when he came, pulled into Lebanon, was like, oh my God, I can drive down these streets. A- a- I mean, e- every place else, you can't. And, and if, if we are not vigilant here, here in five years, we're not going to have that here in Lebanon.
I just think to clarify on what I was saying, my thought process behind that is, I don't know if we make it cheaper and easier for them to produce more units than are already Because essentially, the big picture, it's not necessarily benefiting Lebanon financially, if that makes better sense.
Gotcha.
Okay. Let's not make it cheaper and easier to build giant complexes.
Yeah, so the, the concept behind this is if you can build more units on the same level of land, then you can afford a lower rent base. That's assuming that people will.
Right.
Do that. That being said, we don't have to do every single option that's been put in front of us. You will all have the joy of having to do this again in eight years. And, and again in 16 years. And, and so if, as we grow, we're going to be able to figure out what tools are working, what tools aren't. We're going to be able to say, we're not ready to implement those tools in this cycle, and see how our community grows and see what's working, and we might be willing to do it in the next cycle. And so y- you can say, eh, we're willing to look at open space and parking, that makes sense, but don't touch anything else and leave us alone, and that's okay. Um, we, we don't have to do all of them. We just have to, to be reasonable and say, we want to provide opportunities for, um, the creation of more affordable housing, so.
I would say one consideration for the larger complexes like this, as far as more affordable housing, is when it comes to a complex or renting, I don't think it's the cost of producing it that dictates the rent, it's the market, and it's still going to be essentially the same per unit, so.
Yes.
My two cents on that.
And what we've got seems to be working pretty gosh darn well for all of the apartments being built right now. I mean, and, and have been built in the last, you know, five years. I mean, i- i- it is clearly not broke.
Yeah. So.
Typically, when an apartment complex like these are built, isn't there a traffic study that, that happens along with it?
Something that's larger.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, not to, to speed us along, but this one seems like a no-brainer a- at a staff level. Um, it's restructuring our incentives for low-income restricted units. So these are units that are specifically targeted for, um, low income or extremely low income households. Um, and if you are going to build something that is going to be restricted to those low-income units, then the city usually allows for what's called a density bonus, um, which sometimes increases the density of a project, or it modifies the standards in which they shall apply, um, for their development. And the way that our code is currently written, it's pretty awful. Um, and, and so this would be to, uh, this is again, one of those, like the cottage cluster, we already have it in our code, but tweak it to where it's actually more readily used, is, is basically where we're looking at.
Agreed. Is there anything that says if it's a low-income unit, uh, it can or cannot receive HUD?
In our code currently?
Just in general, I guess, because if it's, if you're required to keep a low income, but then you're also renting to someone who's receiving housing, it's kind of a catch-22. I mean, you would want to o- offer that to somebody who's not having housing paid for them.
Like the Section 8 housing?
Yeah.
I don't think they re- I don't think they even take that in the.
Well, I know that there's that organ, and I don't know how it works as far as this situation, but I know that everybody has to take HUD at this point. Um, you don't necessarily have to make the modifications to make it HUD, make it HUD-approved, but if it is, you can't deny HUD, so.
So, I don't know of any situation in which a, a affordable housing complex has ever, ever been restricted to say, nope, we don't accept HUD here.
Right.
And even if they do accept HUD, the point of the density bonus is to maximize the opportunity for the number of units that can be built for low income. And so even if the, the company that owns it and is operating it gets their full share, you're allowing for more units to be built to accommodate the low income.
Right.
So it's not always, I mean, it, the developer gets theirs.
Yeah.
But there's more units of availability at that point.
That's affordable.
That's affordable.
I like this concept.
But. Y'all are good with that too? Okay.
Just for clarity, are we talking multifamily?
It's usually in that instance, multifamily. When you're talking about providing subsidies for extremely low and low income, they, they don't, there, there's no capacity to purchase. Um, that's, that's your living, as to, to live, basically.
Well, there used to be, there used to be a, uh, uh, structure where that type of unit could be owner occupied, but I've not heard of it for years, so maybe it went away. It was a federally funded thing.
Uh, I mean, if it's a funding source, I can't speak to that.
Probably lasted for 10 years and then it went bye-bye.
A- a- I don't want to take this in a different direction, but, um, I mean, we're, we're talking about building new structures here. But I gotta wonder how this plays out once the structure's built and it's been rented for a couple of years, and then what happens after that? You know, whether, uh, r- rent, rents adjust for the market and what have you, and, and how all of that plays out?
When you, uh, she, Tina could probably speak more eloquently to this than I can, but when you're to the point where you're talking, talking about providing housing for extremely low and low income, you're getting housing subsidy, you're getting, um, tax increment financing, you're getting grants from the state, you're getting grants from the federal government to build the, the structure, and in exchange for that, you have affordability covenants that are restricting your property for, I think it's over 35 years, that it has.
99.
Some of them are 99, there you go.
They go up to 99 years?
Yeah. Um, where it has to be restricted to low income. Um, and they identify, you know, depending on your funding structure, it could be 30% of your units shall be extremely low income restricted, 30% shall be low income, and they'll do a graduated scale, and it needs to stay at that level for the, the perpetuity of that affordability covenant. And then usually, when they are getting close to coming off of the books, then there's a negotiation to, to re-covenant them.
Just so that they can keep the units affordable?
Affordable, yeah.
Because we do it with single-family housing?
Yeah.
I heard a NPR thing about, uh, uh, some sort of deal like this where this guy was going to build low-income housing, so they cut him a property tax break, never built it, his lots just sitting there, and city of Portland's not getting property taxes, low-income people aren't getting their housing, and it's just in limbo. So, um, I, I, I'm sure all of this stuff, it's government red tape and right for all kinds of mess, but, um, if, if we can steer away from some of that abuse, that would be good.
Okay. So currently, we allow for residential opportunities in our commercial zones on a restricted basis that it has to be above a commercial use. Um, and we have some fairly underutilized commercial areas, uh, along our highway. Um, and we do have some underutilized lots in our downtown area, which would, um, benefit potentially with some additional residents being in the downtown, and so this option is to look at, um, different ways to have residential in commercial zones. You can still require commercial to exist, but it could be either in, you know, the commercial units can be in the front, and residential can still be ground floor, but in the back. You can set the minimum standard of what that commercial area shall be, um, or you can leave it as is. For many other options that I have not yet explored.
Or.
It's a great.
Favor of.
In favor of?
I, I think it's a, a great idea. Um, I look at the Wells Fargo building as one of those that would be phenomenal to have upstairs, but it's the fire stuff to deal with, the sprinkler systems in commercial that is the problem. I mean, it is and it isn't. You want them there, but it's expensive in some of those buildings.
Okay. On the space, yes? Uh, this one is, we have standards that say, when you're in an infill area of lots that are one acre or less, there is this met, um, matrix of considerations that you have to do in evaluation of infill development. Um, and it is quite robust, but most people need it, and really just turns into added paperwork at this point, um, because you're, you're building within a small area, there's only so much yield you can get, you're already naturally building. You're already naturally building to what the character of the nature can hold, of the neighborhood can hold. Um, so this proposal is not necessarily get rid of the infill standards, but see how we can simplify it and, and identify what are the key things that we want to ensure there's compatibility of, and, and regulate to that, rather than to the large matrix of what we're currently regulating to.
I think this just makes sense. I think it also just, uh, ties right along with, uh, repurposing the commercial as well.
Does this help?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so, for the next steps, there will be a joint city council and planning commission meeting on February twenty-second at noon.
Oh, at noon?
At noon.
Hi, Dave.
And that will be with the consultants. Um, I will be sharing some of the notes that we have from today and from the previous meetings. It will be here at the travel station.
That is the Cascade, is it Cascade Partners, or Casc-?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Cause I know that we had these conversations with them, and they were supposed to bring back.
Yes.
Like the cottage cluster styles that Marcellus is asking about, and the different how, okay. There were specific.
Yep, and they're working on putting together those, taking those comments that were received at the previous work sessions with the city council and the planning commission. Um, I will add the additional comments that, that we had tonight. Um, and we, we will have a further discussion of what some of those will look like with the additional information requested.
Is that just set for the lunch hour, or do you think it'll go longer?
I think we're set for the, the lunch hour. I, I don't know, y'all like to talk on this kind of stuff, so it might go longer.
I think we got it all out tonight, it's good.
Um, so yeah, so I, it, it's scheduled for an hour, it might go longer. All right? We have a bit of time. Hi.
How are you, Don?
I'm good. It's one of those days.
How you doing, Dave? Brilliant. Well, we can do a five-minute meeting. Oh, it was on the agenda.
Maybe it will.
I forgot to send out an email.
Yep.
Eating a big gorgeous meal. Well, if you wanna discuss some of these things.
Yeah.
Yes. All right. If you wanna watch it, and then if you wanna set up a meeting to get your own thoughts, or an email. Y'all will see it? They always do. On is a sticker for right at six.
It is the hour. Let's open the Lebanon Planning Commission hearing. Be standing for a flag salute. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for Richard's fans, one nation, every ground, indivisible. And turn it over staff for a roll call.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Malloy. Commissioner Fountain.
Here.
Commissioner Engelford.
Here.
Commissioner Baxter.
Here.
Commissioner Bashir.
Here.
And Commissioner McLean. Vice Chair Gary Kounarowski.
Here.
And Chair Robertson.
Here. Okay, I know the agenda says there are no minutes, but in fact, there are two sets.
Hey, we sent out an adjusted one.
I'm assuming you've had an opportunity to look over the minutes. So let's take them one at a time, the minutes from November 16th. Is there any, uh, changes, adjustments, corrections necessary? Hearing none, then those minutes will stand approved as presented. Moving on to the second set, December 21st. Any adjustments, corrections? Hearing none, then those minutes will also stand approved as presented. Uh, we come to a point in our agenda where if there's anybody with us this evening that would like to address the planning commission on an item that is not on our agenda, this is a time that I would invite you to come forward, sign in, state your name and address the planning commission. Seeing no movement, then we will move on to our public hearing. And our public hearing tonight is planning file CU dash two-two day zero-one. Uh, this hearing was opened last month and then continued. So this will be a continuation of that hearing. Uh, once again though, before we get into it, I'd like to ask if there's been any additional uh, conflict of interest, expertise contact or bias, uh, that you need to disclose. Okay, seeing none, then I'll turn it over to staff.
Uh, good evening. Okay, um, before you tonight is a proposed conditional use permit to allow for the outdoor storage of, um, people's recreational vehicles, trailers, cars and boats and miscellaneous items of similar sorts. Um, it is for the property that's located at four zero seven zero South Sanium Highway, which is on the intersection of, uh, South Sanium Highway and Crowfoot Road. And it's the worst intersection to identify directions. So I'm going to say generally the northeast section of it. Um, it is a property that is in the mixed use zone. Um, and it is definitely surrounded by several different mixed uses. Um, generally speaking, to the west and the south is a mix of single family homes, agricultural uses. Um, to the north generally and to the east are, um, properties that are more manufacturing and industrial in nature. Um, and for the public facilities, we don't site does have, um, well and septic that is in existing that they'd be able to utilize if it was needed. Um, in terms of the proposal itself, uh, the applicant is looking to do, um, the outdoor storage. Um, the sites, uh, would be used for the, the storage of those types of materials we already discussed. In reviewing the property, we, uh, looked at the development standards. Um, and the development standards identify required setbacks, um, for development itself, um, which is, um, when not adjacent to residential, there's a front and street side setback of 10 feet with no required interior or rear yard. And when there is an adjacency to residential, there's a setback of 20 feet. Um, these are for structures specifically. Um, and so you see on the proposed site plan that there is an area for an onsite manager. They're showing that it would meet the setback requirements established for structures, which is 20 feet when adjacent to residential. Um, the rest of it, we've identified looking at it as parking and it identifies that for parking purposes. Um, there's a five foot buffer required, um, when adjacent to your front and street side setback. And so that has been identified there. Um, when it is adjacent directly to the residential on the west, uh, there is a identified, woo, boy, let me go back here. There's an identified 20 foot setback, uh, along the back. And that is on the outside portion of where the fence currently is. And that's just open vegetation. Uh, where it's adjacent to the industrial areas, there is no proposed setback. Um, for landscaping and, and buffering, the code identifies that you do have a landscape standard for the, the required setbacks and that, that landscape buffer for the parking area. And how it is applied in this instance is that there is a, a section regarding, um, site obscure, partially site obscuring fencing being allowed and proposed. And it says that, uh, this is a standard that is applied where low level screening is adequate to soften the impact of one use or development from another. And it can be, uh, apply, and it can be applied in conjunction with landscape plantings or applied in areas where landscape plantings are not necessary. And seeing as this would, the landscape area would generally be on the inside portion of where the fence exists and it would not be visible for anybody using the site because it's a passive use. Um, it's proposed at the staff level that the fencing itself is sufficient to meet the landscape buffer requirements and no actual landscape plantings are required. Um, in terms of access, uh, the proposed access is off of Crowfoot Road. It's been recently approved by a, with a new drive approach that was permitted through Lynn County. Um, the required improvements are not yet fully completed, um, but it is permitted. Uh, and the access would go, uh, have an area long enough to where an RV can pull fully onto the sites and then enter through the secured access and then go into the interior. Um, Lynn County's permit requirements for the drive approach identifies that it needs to be asphalt or concrete from the drive approach 20 feet back. Um, our code stipulates that you need to do, uh, a hard weather surface like asphalt or concrete, um, 20 feet back as well. Um, and you could do gravel if it was behind a, a, an access gate. Um, and in this instance, with the access gate being located almost 70 feet back to allow for that vehicle to fully pull into the road, um, the application of our standard would be that full area between the road to the access gate would need to be paved. And so there is a condition that establishes that requirement. Um, in terms of parking for the use itself, it does not require any parking. Um, there is required parking when there is an onsite manager. Uh, I understand that the map itself identifies an onsite manager. However, as it's described in the staff report, it's actually proposed to be a caretaker dwelling. Um, right now, the caretaker that's onsite is in a recreational vehicle. That's not currently permitted in our code. And it's been requested to the city council that we consider a code change to allow for recreational vehicle use for caretaker dwelling. And so that is not under consideration tonight. And so there is no parking standard that is being, uh, established tonight as part of the use. If and when a caretaker dwelling is established, parking will be, uh, accommodated through that new application process. Um, and finally, in terms of the hours of operation that are proposed for the use, uh, it would be seven AM to 10 PM Monday through Friday and 10 AM to 10 PM Saturday and Sunday. As there is no proposed onsite manager, all of the transactions would occur online. And so it's a secured facility that is granted access to those that are renting the space. Um, and so it's remote access with, with no onsite, uh, management office. Um, and so I believe that covers the, the report requi- uh, the report and the basis for the decision criteria. Um, we do have the full staff report that was published online for, for the public to review. And it's been up for over a month now. Sorry for the delay. Um, and with that, I can conclude my staff report and answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay. And we will open our public hearing. Uh, but before we do, I meant to mention earlier, last month, when we opened the hearing, the legal standards were read into the record. Those same legal standards apply tonight, uh, through the continuation. If there's anybody that wants to hear those again, please say so. Otherwise, what we will, what we heard last month will, uh, also apply tonight. Okay, then we'll open a public hearing, ask the applicant or applicant's representative to come forward. Sign in, state your name, please.
Good evening. My name is Laura LaRocque with Udell Engineering and I'm the applicant's representative. And then David Gilat, the applicant is, uh, in the audience tonight as well. So thank you for having the opportunity to consider this application. As Kelly stated, it's a conditional use request for the open storage facility. Um, as you can see, the site has already been improved with that site obscuring fence. Um, so you probably have a good, uh, kind of working knowledge of how that property would be screened from the public right of way. Uh, interior, it's going to be pretty simple, just a, a parking lot area with designated spaces that people can park either vehicles or boats or recreational vehicles in that area. Uh, as Kelly mentioned, there will be a subsequent application request for a caretaker, um, to be onsite just for added security. And, um, with that, Kelly does such a great thorough overview. I, I really don't have too much to add other than repeating, so. Um, but I do want to be available in case the commission had any questions this evening about the application.
Okay, any questions for Laura?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak in favor of the application? Seeing nobody, is there anybody wishing to speak in opposition of the application? Seeing none, then the public hearing will be closed. All further discussion will be among staff and planning commissioners. Hey, that was short and sweet. Any thoughts, concerns?
I'd like to make a couple of comments, Don.
Sure, go for it.
I would like to commend the owner of this property for the work he's done there and the improvements he's made. Uh, I think that, uh, the community owes him a thank you for what he's done there and his efforts and the money he has spent to improve that property. I, I think it's met the criteria.
Okay.
I think it should be approved as, as is. The only thing that, uh, I think that, uh, we should mention is that, he is allowed to have a, a resident night watchman on that property. Cause I know from my own experience that, uh, there's a problem, yeah, with these storage areas of theft and break-ins and people stealing gas and lug nuts and, and everything else under the sun from these places. So I think that, uh, having a night watchman or security on that for 24 hour protection is a, is a good idea. And I think that we should mention it in option two.
Anybody else? Do you feel then, um, Dave mentioned that the criteria had been met? Does anybody feel it has not been met? Okay, is anybody prepared to make a motion? Go ahead, Don.
Okay, I'll make a motion that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit, CU dash 22 dash oh one, based on the written findings in the staff report and direct the staff to draft an order of recommendation incorporating the findings and conditional approval.
And there's a second. Any further discussion? Hey, all those then in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on. Commission business comments?
Uh, so for staff comments really quick, um, the planning commission evaluated a variance application, uh, originally in November. Uh, and the, the application denial was formally approved at the December meeting. Um, the application, um, appeal period has elapsed and there was no appeal filed. Um, however, as we informed you, um, at the December meeting, the applicant, uh, was looking for opportunities and ways to, uh, still produce the number of units that, that were, were originally requested, um, while fully meeting the code and not requiring the, the variance application. Um, and I'm here to report that they have been able to meet those requirements, um, without the variance. And, uh, just for informational purposes, I can show you what's the site would look like. Um, so here is the new layout. It doesn't look all that much different. Um, but the new layout's key differential is the inclusion of a separate drive access point that would accommodate the required parking for parcel one, um, without needing to have exclusive access off of the access easement. And so by them having their own separate access, it is now authorized to have parcel one as a duplex. Parcel three back here has its own separate access. And that then is allowed for duplex and parcel two has always been proposed as a duplex. Um, this proposal meets the required driveway separation established in our transportation system plan. Um, and, and so, uh, unfortunately, or fortunately, or however you want to look at it, um, the, the applicant has, has met the requirements fully within the code. Um, and, and it will be able to move forward under the minor land partition to, to establish a total of three duplexes on the site. So this is just informational purposes. We did want to close the loop on that to make sure that it was also available for the public, uh, so that the public was able to see, um, how the proposal meets the code. Um, and, uh, there's no application needed to make that change because it's within conformance of the minor land partition. So that's, that's what we have to share on that. Um, obviously we will have a meeting, uh, coming up with the joint meeting of the planning commission and the city council. Um, and I believe if we do get application, uh, submitted by the end of this week, we are anticipating to have a planning commission meeting, a, a regular meeting next month as well to consider a subdivision. Those are my comments and updates and I apologize for, um, the delays from last month. It was unanticipated that I would not be available. Um, and I apologize for having to choose the ER.
All right, is there anything else to bring before the planning commission? Questions? Thoughts? Uh, as far as the, uh, since we're in, um, commissioner comments, uh, as far as the work session tonight, uh, are you satisfied with how that went? Is there, do you feel you need more work on that? So everybody feels good about that?
So our meeting in February then with the city council and with us is gonna, we're gonna talk more about that in that work session? Is that what that?
That work session, I haven't worked it all out and, and full understanding of the, the scope of what the consultants are wanting to do. From my understanding, it is going to be providing the additional information that's been requested by both the planning commission and the city council. And to start talking about what these policies are going to look like as part of the document adoption.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? And we are adjourned. Thank you.
That was fast.